All right, I need to call to order the finance corporation special meeting before we start our regular meeting. So at this point, I can turn it over to you, Brian.
Yes, and for those who are here, we actually have two meetings today. The first one is our finance corporation meeting is in preparation for a project that we're going to do at Highlands Middle School to replace the roof, which is now over 20 years old. So we've asked Dr. Bob Tarvin to come and just kind of inform the board what we're looking at and approve our resolution for authorizing revenue bonds.
Good evening. Good to see you all. I laid a little sheet like this on your desk right before the meeting and think you're all familiar with the project that you're doing at the roof over at your middle school. And what we're going to do now is consider a motion to finance the work that you're going to do over there. This document we have in front of you, we call Plan of Financing. By the way, I'm from RSA Advisors and we call it a plan of finance. And I'll go through it briefly with you. Stop me at any point when you have a question that you might like to know something about, but I won't spend a lot of your time on the details unless you ask me. So if we go forward. When we look at bonding, I always like to tell the boards that bonding is nothing mysterious. What we're talking about is borrowing money or you're making a loan. The reason we call it bonding in school finance is that we get the source of the funds from municipal bonds. So therefore, we call it bonding. That's what you do. If we got our money from the bank, we would be here talking about making a loan, okay, from a bank because the source of your money would be a bank. Source of the money now, though, is municipal bonds. So that's why I use the term bonding throughout here. Please just think of it in those terms. As we look at it, anytime we make a loan, the lending institution is going to want to know how much you already owe someone else and they're going to want to go how much you're going to have to pay back the loan. So it's that simple concept that we're looking at with you here tonight. So the first page of the document shows you the outstanding local debt that Fort Thomas has as a school district. Of course, the Board of Education is a legal corporation. It cannot have debt, debt over one year. So that's why we're having a finance corporation meeting now. So back in the late 80s is when the legislature passed statutes that allowed school boards to create corporations like this. The corporation is nothing more than another legal corporation in Kentucky, but it can issue bonds without limitations. The corporation can. As a school board, you're limited to debt of one year only. So therefore, if we were in before previous late 80s, you would be going to the city of Fort Thomas, asking them to borrow money for you to do a project. And I think we'd all agree it's much more efficient with the system we have now and also probably a whole lot less political, as you might imagine. So therefore, we have to have two meetings. This one, and then in the regular Board of Education, you actually will pass a motion authorizing this corporation to act on behalf of the Board of Education. The beauty of it is that you, as board members of the Board of Education, are also the directors of the corporation. Therefore, you really have control of the situation. So you can control both the corporation in finance and the Board of Education. So we'll look at what you owe right now, and that's page one there. Each of my columns there represent a specific loan or specific, we call them bond series that you have on the books, and they go out for 20 years, which is our typical school bond length of time. And if you look on column L, the last one over there, we just total them up by fiscal year. So you see your debt that you owe as a district each fiscal year going out. Across the top there, the headings show RAF. And RAF in our language is just a refunding. And in a bank terms, they would call it a refinance. Same concept. You make a new bond issue, pay off the old one if you can save the interest rates. And you've done a couple of those here. We watch that as your fiscal agent. We monitor your bonds all the time. They have to have a 5% present value savings of the refunded principal before we would move forward on one. After looking at the debt you owe, the next thing investors want to know is how you're going to pay it back. That's my page two there, and it just entitled Summary of Funds Available. Each of those columns represent a specific statutory authorized source of funds. We sell these bonds. It's called revenue bonds. So these are the sources of revenue you have. The first, column B, the first one's a local nickel. That's our five cents per hundred that you must set aside for facilities. You all have set aside a second one here. We call that a second nickel. And then you are also contributing 1.2 cents from the general fund. So columns B through 3D there represent your local funds that you're committing to this project. Then we go through D, E, and F. Those three columns are state funds. Capital Outlay, FSBK 1 and FSBK 2. Those are farmer named. FSBK stands for Facility Support Program of Kentucky. I like to call them equalization because it equalizes your nickel to be the equivalent of the state average nickel times 150%. So therefore, every student in the state has a certain floor for facilities, which I really think is really neat for us as Kentucky. A lot of states don't do that. So this equalizes your local nickel so that it's equivalent to this biennium $505 per student. So that's basically what that equalization does. So as your local resources go up, the state goes down. If your local resources go down, your state goes up. It just equalizes. And then the only other thing on that page of significance is the SFCC offers School Facilities Construction Commission. It's a commission in the state. It's a separate appropriation, and you all get a share of it based on your local facility plan showing what facility need you have. So it's a ratio of your facility need compared to the state's facility need. Moving on, after you determine the revenue, we look at that and see, well, how much can we borrow as a district? What would you pay back? We feel very comfortable at this point saying you could borrow $12.5 million, which is my page three. I always say, look at column C, bottom line. That's the number. The rest of that is actually how bonds work. Be happy to talk to you about anything you have a question on, but basically you have 12.5 million available. And for this particular project, if you move to my summary, you have $590,000 of need. So once you do that on my summary there, it's going to leave you $9 million roughly to future needs. Any questions you have, might have about that?
We have two action items that this body has to consider. One is a resolution to approve the sale of bonds, and then the other would be approval of last month's minutes. And so before we move to the resolution, are there any other questions for Dr. Tarvin?
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, no questions? Good. All right. I need a motion for the adoption of resolution authorizing the issuing of revenue bonds. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passed. All right, the next part is the approval of the minutes from 2/13/23. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of February 13th, 2023 meeting.
I motion that we approve those minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, all right. And then we can move out of here. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Okay. Is it catching up?
No, it actually looks like so. My update worked.
Good. Okay. Okay, Brian, you're welcome. Okay. Would you all please stand for the pledge to the flag?
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. I wasn't here last month, but it's my first time in this space. It's a good space. So welcome to our new space if this is your first time coming. The first thing that we're going to do is do the recognitions. And so the first item is anything, updates, bravos, anything that board members want to talk about that you've been to, have seen, and want to talk about what's going on in the schools. Can you go, Julie?
I'll get us kicked off. I have seen a lot of dance recently, and so just want to give a shout out to the Highlands Middle School Dance Team, which won first for hip hop. They went undefeated all season. At KD Co, the state competition, in second in Palm. The JV, who won first in both their categories, hip hop and Palm, and the varsity that won in game day and in Palm. And then the varsity team did compete in nationals and placed 12th in Orlando, Florida last weekend with game day. So that's the first time they've competed that category. So that was cool.
Very cool. Anybody else have anything?
I had the opportunity to attend both the Highlands High School combined concert with the strings, the chorus and the band, and then also the middle school chorus concerts. And so just want to congratulate the kids on some pleasant evenings of music.
I'm always impressed with the strings on, just the growth through the years. Really, really cool. Anybody else have anything?
I was at the kindergarten circus. The strings killed it again. It was a great time. Yeah, always fun to see that.
Well, my 28-year-old was the strong man when he was at the kindergarten circus.
Yeah, we dealt with the snake charmer and then lift the weights up to prove they're stronger than the strong man.
They've been doing it a long time. I want to talk about the Nesties that is coming up. So the Nesties is a really great opportunity to honor teachers and workers and support people in our, in our school district. And I know that people are very excited about it. So it is April the 13th. It's from 5:00 until about 9:00. It's at the mess hall. And the speaker is Gary Brooks, who is kind of a character kind of guy. Should be a very fun discussion and a fun speech. But we're honoring Andy Eckerly at the high school. We're honoring Aaron Lentz, Carrie Skirvin at the middle school. We're honoring some service people. And if you want to rip out those names, that'd be great.
Joe Wire, Mike Redman, and Whitney McKay for outstanding service.
So, and I, anybody that has never been to one, if you want to come, it's a, it's a great thing. And the teachers really are always so honored to be honored by their peers. So it's, it's a great evening. So I'll talk about that. And then I also want to talk, I spent a lot of the fall while you were doing dance. I was doing girls volleyball, middle school volleyball and middle school basketball. So in the finals, in the girls division, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade girls, I have a sixth grader, all went to the finals. And so the seventh grade girls ended up winning. The six and eight girls were runners up. I don't think that they've ever all gone. So I think that was pretty cool. And then the boys, the eighth grade boys, won their district too, or the region as well. So it was a really, it was a good year. So, all right, you have other things to add to it?
So I think last month when we were here, we had some great presentations around the wrestling program and the, and the award that was given out. And then since that time, I think girls wrestling was sanctioned in the state, so which was very cool for them. They've already got a core team of girls going, so I think that's going to be great for them. And then we actually had a couple of the boys wrestlers, I think, place in the state. I think I saw at least one was six, if I'm not mistaken. And then Sweeney Todd is starting next week, musical at the high school. And so insiders tell me it's awesome. And so tickets are on sale now. It starts next Thursday, goes Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, right? Didn't skip a day, no. So go get your tickets for that. And that's all I have.
Lot, a lot of things going on. The only, I have a couple of add-ons. In the, in the area of sports, we have a new ninth region three-point record holder in Will Harold set the three-point record for all of the ninth region. Also, Marissa Green was named the NKAC Division Two Player of the Year for Girls Basketball. Odyssey of the Mind, we wish Odyssey of the Mind, FBI LA, best of luck at their state competition. Henry Weghorst was a regional competitor at our most recent spelling bee, so we, we offer congratulations to him. We'll have several students and staff that are going to be recognized regionally at our upcoming Excellence in Education program. Joe Wire, which we mentioned before, received extra extraordinary service award. Michelle Fair will receive a golden apple. Bianca Hemseth, who we'll be recognizing in just a little bit for a couple of things, but she'll be an academic all-star, and Caroline Moore for Against All Odds Award. So congratulations to them. Do we have a couple of national merit finalists that we're going to talk about here in just a few? And then also our middle school band was one of three out of 44 concert bands that were recognized for exemplary status at a recent assessment at NKU. So congratulations to them. And then I just also want to say thanks to the city once again, not only for this space, but we have our first ever city interns that, that are working within the city and city government and getting a great experience there. So a lot of cool stuff happening.
That's great. Anything else? Okay. The next thing is the banner presentation discussion. So you want to take that, Brian?
Yep. Is Avery here?
Yeah.
Come on up, Avery. So every year for our Kentucky School Board Association, every district, and it's really the highlight actually of, of the conferences, every district has a, an opportunity to have a banner that is displayed for all of the districts throughout the state. This year, Avery submitted amongst several applications or applicants what the banner would be for the, the theme of "The Sky is the Limit." And so you can see her design. I'm sort of partial to birds, which was, that was a nice touch there, Avery. And so we, we want to congratulate her and thank her for her contribution, and we have something, a sort of a recognition of that. Round of applause.
Excellent. So thanks for your advice.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you. Okay. The next is the national merit finalist. Mr. Darnell, are you going to do this?
So in the fall, we had two students that we came to with saying that they were semifinalists, and both of them have now been named national merit finalists. Bianca was just announced as a winner for something, but she's going to come up.
Why don't you bring him up?
And then Bianca Hemseth and Kayden Schroeder is also making his way to the front. So I think one thing that is really just a testament to our, our district is how involved both of these students are. So not only are they excelling when it comes to the academics, but both of them were varsity athletes for multiple years. Last year, we recognized Kayden, who was first chair concert master at All State for Orchestra. So I'm sure they would love to tell you what they're considering next year because I've been hounding them and we need them to commit to something in front of you so it's official.
That's, that's a stressful question.
It's a tough question. Every senior's favorite.
I'm not actually completely sure where I'm committing yet. But it is looking like Purdue, most likely, because their engineering program is great, and I think it's going to be pretty great. And I don't think the cold and the air weather is going to catch me.
We're letting you practice right now.
Yeah.
And yeah, I'm probably going to end up at Ole Miss.
Very cool.
No, I will be avoiding that yet. Not a fan of the fact that it was 73 days ago and 34 when I came in today.
Yeah, I know. That's what I said. We shouldn't be saying blustery in, in March. I also want to kind of add to that. You know, when you started this, there were 1.5 million people that took the PSAT, and you're one of 15,000 left, you know, the God final. So it is a huge thing. And it's not something that, oh, you wake up one day and you take this as a junior. It's years of taking the right courses and stretching and probably sweating sometime and wondering why all your friends are doing this and you're, you're taking harder and harder classes. So we applaud that. That's what, you know, that's, that's one of the favorite jobs that I had when I was at school is being on the journey with the kids. And, you know, what do you want to be when you grow up? And so I really applaud you and congratulations. We would like to give you Tradition of Excellence Awards, because that's pretty excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, our next one is you, Brian.
So speaking of Tradition of Excellence Awards, Kayden and Bianca both received, is a good bridge into our, our next area of recognition. Each month, we have opportunities for the community, for teachers, for students, for staff, to recognize those who embody the tradition of excellence and, and our focus on the future. And so that is, that is part of where Bianca and Kayden received that, that recognition as being one of the elite in the nation for the recognition that you receive. We have another Tradition of Excellence Award that is a pretty special one, and it's a, it was, it was a cool narrative. And I'm going to invite Ms. Amy Frye to come up and speak on behalf of her nomination.
I probably should not admit this in front of you, Mr. Robinson, but when we receive the Forward Focus emails each month, my first go-to is to scroll to the bottom where the cute babies are and just stare at the babies.
I know.
And sometimes, sometimes I may skim over other things. This past month, though, as I was looking at the Tradition and Excellence Award, and I was looking at the criteria, it just, something stood out to me in thinking about my own students. And one student in particular really stood out. It was Haley Ryan. But the funny thing about Haley is she's brand new to the district. This is her first year. So she's a new bluebird. She's an eighth grader at HMS, but she embodies every single one of those characteristics for excellence, for looking at our traditions in this awesome district and where we're headed. Haley strives in all she does, but it's not due to just, you know, coming in each day and just doing what she can. She is such a hard worker. She's looking to just improve on everything she does. She's a volleyball player. I've gotten to watch her this past season, and she's just, she just shines all around. And she is the embodiment of a brand new HMS student who also has that tradition of excellence, and I'm super proud of her. I'm so grateful for her family for bringing her here.
Come on up here, Haley. Let's see Haley. Yeah, I spent fall with watching her play volleyball. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good. Tell me what you like about being here.
Well, the environment is just really friendly and everybody is so encouraging of success, and it's really nice to be here.
That's great. I love hearing that.
Thank you.
I do. So we would like to present to you Tradition of Excellence Award, and it says Haley Ryan for exhibiting and modeling the portrait of a graduate competencies, a courageous leader, and curious and critical thinker. So thank you, and thank you to Ms. Frye for nominating her. Oh, and you have to, you have to get you some paper. Playing catch-up.
And thanks to mom and dad there, too.
Thank you.
It's a future bluebird.
Uh huh. It looks like they'll be around for a while.
Love it.
All right, Mr. Darnell, are you going to present your group from the high school?
Yeah, so this is four of our students from our We the People program. So I know that we have two new board members, and if you've been on the board, you're probably well aware, and I think a couple of you at the table probably taught this or were heavily involved at the time. But we thought, considering the fact that they just qualified for something like their 18th consecutive national championship, it would be nice for them to come and to kind of give the new board members an overview. But also, this is the first time they've been back in person since COVID. And so I think they're prepping doubly as hard. And so we have Kai Knauer, Ella Peeper, Joe Hallbauer, and Anna Lucy Suri here to tell you all about what they're working on to present in Washington, DC.
My name is Ella Peeper, and I'm joined by Kai Knauer, Anna Lucy Suri, and Justin Hallbauer. We're seniors enrolled in the We the People class this year, and we will be competing in the national competition in April. We the People is a constitution-based class where we work in units based on different subjects, portions of history, and expertise. Each of the six units consists of 45 people and must be virtual board of qualified judges from across the nation, and we've all equally participated and are well-educated on our topics. Units are required to write three, four-minute opening statements that answer three feet of questions solely. Then we are asked follow-up questions for eight minutes regarding clarification on our openings, expansion upon current issues, and any other issues a judge has regarding the unit. For example, Joe and I represent Unit 2, which revolves around how the framers created the Constitution. The question our unit just completed a practice hearing for and we will compete at nationals is, in June 1787, one writer said, "I reprobate the idea of a division of the states into three or four republics. The greatest enemy of America could have suggested nothing worse or more destructive. Why would some Americans have feared such a possibility in 1787? In your opinion, did these fears warrant the creation of a new constitution? And to what extent, if any, are there issues facing our nation today that might lead to some advocate for a smaller nation? This question led us to do research on the Federalist Papers, secession movements, and the many failures of the Articles of Confederation and other in-depth topics." The other units are focused on various other ideas, such as what rights the Bill of Rights protects and issues facing democracy today. Students in the class are also required to be knowledgeable in current events, research and writing skills, and public speaking. Throughout the year, we've had the chance to become constitutional experts, learn from scholars at the National Constitution Center, and compete on the state and national level. This year, one of our classes won the state competition, and the other about second place by two points, and both were given the opportunity to attend the national competition from April 21st through 25th, as our school has done for over a decade. We pride ourselves on being students who aren't working for these tests, are learning just to get through the class, but that we are students who learn for the sake of learning. It is a performance class where students are constantly working to improve their own skills, but work for a team. We individually and collectively want to be the best we can be, as each unit score contributes to the overall team score. The opportunities that we have been exposed to would not have been possible without the support of the board, especially Mr. Robinson, who brought this class to our school and has supported us by sitting down here and seeing our theater and attending our state competition. We appreciate all of your help, not just our team this year, but for the future classes in the years to come. Thank you.
I got full confidence you guys are going to kill it because you presented really well. Very well spoken. Yeah.
We need a hard constitutional question, though.
That's all you are. Mr. Knauer can do it.
I'm rusty.
But I would like to hear, so you said you guys are in Unit 2, and then what unit do you guys compete with?
I compete with Unit 5.
I'm in Unit 1.
Okay. Very cool.
And I know also, Clem, from, from what you said, that's what serves them so well when they, when they leave here because, you know, you're used, I mean, this is a piece of cake for you. You're used to presenting and, you know, organizing your writing and all those sorts of things. So even if you don't become lawyers, it's going to serve you well in college. So that's great.
Is there any element of the class that, that you didn't expect when you signed up and you started and that you've reflected on?
Come on, who's the one who jumps on it? Don't you guys have that figured out? Who jumps on it, buys people time while they think?
I haven't been, I haven't been able to stump them all year, so I'm pretty excited, man.
Just as being somebody who's sat in, like Mr. Robinson, they go through the same court routes, and they're pulling like the most obscure US codes from 100 years ago that nobody here has probably ever read or looked at, and they're using them to play both sides in arguments. So they're not just trying to prove their side of an argument, they're using
Who jumps on it buys people time while they think.
I haven't been able to stump them all year, so I'm pretty excited man.
Just as being somebody who's sat in like Mr. Robinson, they go through the Supreme Court routes and they're pulling like the most obscure US codes from 100 years ago that nobody here has probably ever read or looked at and they're using them to play both sides in an argument. So they're not just trying to prove their side of an argument, they're using other US codes to address the counterclaim for why it's not a valid counterclaim to the argument. So it's not just, here's a question, tell us why this is your bad. You know, it's really that circular type thinking to where they're telling you you're right, they're telling you why you're wrong, which also means that they're right again. The way they go about that and to do it in four to five minutes is just really impressive. So for me at least, coming in and I never, haven't seen We the People, the way that they were researching codes, they're going to all the different websites that US attorneys use, LexisNexis and things like that, that no other high school student would even know about and they're using it so proficiently, it's just really remarkable to see how detailed they did as they're getting into the finalities of these US codes.
I think also the two content things I didn't think, because I was like really excited to do the class because everyone that's gone to this class has loved it, but I really didn't know that much about it. I was surprised at the amount of philosophy and the amount of current events. You really have to know your current events because literally if something had happened like two days before, a judge should ask you about it like, oh, that just happened. What do you think about that based on what you said in your opening? You really have to be up to date with it, which is something that I hadn't been doing before, so.
And going off what Anna Lucy said about like philosophy, I've heard a lot about the class and mostly that it's a Constitution class, it's a Constitution class. And so we walk in and like the first like two months of school, all of our research is regarding Unit One, which is philosophy and John Locke and Thomas Hobbes and Costco or Republican Assembly and natural rights and like, and I was just like, where's our Constitution? Like, what am I going to be doing right now? And so, but then...
Come on, we're so young. You've got to unpack centuries of things from other countries, right? And that's what you guys do, Unit One, and you don't leave them in the unit two.
I actually think the hardest thing for me was deciphering what the different founders and thinkers meant by different phrases in the Constitution because it's often trickly worded and I found that that was very hard to like figure out at first, but I'm kind of getting better at it now, so that makes sense.
Or take the rest of your life to figure out. And that is constant debate, right? It's a living document, but with that, you know, what is it? How is it growing and how is it changing in any context?
I was also really surprised like how all the units kind of work together and how you really have to like think about specific, very specific things, but also think about how it connects to just everything in the world.
I was just going to ask as seniors, what are your plans next year? We always ask.
I'm planning to go to Center College. Majoring in Biology on a pre-med track and applying minor in German and then I'm also on a teaching there, so.
Awesome.
I'm not quite sure yet. I'm kind of waiting on a few scholarships to possibly...
You're not going to Center? Okay, you're a double legacy.
So either Center undecided or University of Cincinnati or CCM Media Production Program.
I'm going to Miami University and I'm studying Public Administration with a minor in Alisa.
I will be attending EKU this fall and I will be majoring in forensic psychology and minoring in German.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, we, in education circles, talk about deeper learning or it used to be 21st century skills and we've applied that as a portrait of a graduate kind of competency. And when I listen to you all and watch you tackle important topics, it's equally impressive to see how you utilize research to make a claim about not just your opinion, but your supported opinion to make a difference moving forward, but you're also working together. You're working collaboratively, you're addressing adversity, you're doing all of the things that will serve you really well in college. So thank you for taking the challenge. We wish you best of luck at Nationals. I've been uber impressed every time I've come in and sat in the class, so thank you for being here tonight.
Part of gift.
Thank you.
I was like, yeah, you can talk about that.
Congratulations ladies. Okay, the next section is the community forum, so if anybody who's been here being honored would like to leave, I mean, you can walk out at this time or you're happy to stay too. All right, the community forum portion of the meeting of the Board of Education is an opportunity for members of the community to informally address the board about a variety of topics, including issues for further consideration. Since the topics raised may not be issues listed and advertised on the public agenda, the community forum is not intended to be a setting for dialogue with the board. Direct questions may be referred to the appropriate district personnel for future response, answered briefly if a matter of procedure, or tabled as they might be a future agenda item. Speakers who have registered at the reception area are asked to identify themselves, state their reason for addressing the board. Please address the Board of Education as a whole through the chairperson rather than individual members. Pursuant to state and federal law, questions or comments pertaining to an individual, student, employer, or community member cannot be discussed in an open meeting. So we have one person who has signed up. Tracy Whitney? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I have spoken at seven site-based meetings, administration, and several school board members regarding the contradiction of the HHS cellphone policy and the school board policy. I have spoken to several outside agencies and they are all in agreement that both policies contradict one another. HHS policy admits that teachers are removing personal possession cellphones in the final paragraph by stating that they need, if they need possession for medical purposes, they can request. This admits that a use of a cubby or a pocket is removable possession, which clearly violates the telecommunication device policy of the school board. The definition of possession was up for debate. As I have spoken to some school board members and legal consultation, they are all in agreement that the definition of possession cannot be interpreted in multiple ways and the legal term of possession means you are not blocked from your item. HHS policy directly blocks a child from their possession. Teachers and administrators have signed a contract to follow school board policy and I encourage all school board members to review the new HHS cellphone policy and to see how it directly contradicts the school board policy. And I've always been one that I'm in education, I'm totally in agreement with cellphones being put away. However, the way that the cellphone policy is written violates the school board policy and at this point, it appears to me from all the site-based meetings I'm attending that it seems to be more of a discipline issue than a cellphone issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next are the action items. Jerry, I think you're up first talking about Johnson.
All right, every month we get closer and closer and closer to never having to bring this topic up again. We're into that point in the process where we are just going through all the steps required by the Department of Education. And there are many steps and they have to be done in sequence and following kind of their timeline. So certain things can be done only after other items on the checklist are done. One of the items on the checklist for a project is the approval of BG four documents and we have three of them for you tonight, one from Morrell Construction, one from Jose Project Movers and Paul Michaels and Sons. And essentially what a BG four document is, is it is a document we file with the Department of Education that says we signed a contract for X amount. If that contract had any change orders, it lists the amount of change orders, the final value of the contract, and then it's everyone signing off, the contractor, the architect, the engineer, and the board of education representative, in this case, Mr. Robinson, that that's the amount we actually paid them at the conclusion of their work. So we have those three documents from Morrell, Jose, and Paul Michaels and Sons for you tonight.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about this? Okay, all right. Then I need a motion for the approval of BG four contract closeout forms for Morrell Construction, Jose Project Movers, and Paul Michaels and Sons for the Johnson Elementary Replacement Project. I'll motion. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, now you're going to talk about a roof.
I'm going to talk about a roof. So last week, we received a bid for the roof project at Highlands Middle School. We did receive, four contractors picked up documents and looked at the project, but only two submitted bids and we are recommending that you accept a bid from Imbus Roofing. The main base bid along with one alternate two, which includes cleaning up and repairing and replacing the interior portion of the screening. This is something that is being done in conjunction with the guaranteed energy savings contract project because when work is done on the units that are inside that screening for the HVAC, this would be an appropriate time to go ahead and repair and renovate the screening that goes around that large equipment on top of the building. So we have a base bid of $795,450 and then alternate two for just, I believe it was $13,500, $13,450. So we are recommending that you accept a total bid of $808,900.
Okay, any questions about this?
This would be about the time, and we've talked about this roof for a while, so the new board members coming on, this would be about the time that Brad would be talking about the flat roof, so if you want to channel Brad. But we've been talking about needing to replace and it's 20 years old, so it's not new to us.
We want to be ahead of the game. We don't want to wait until there are significant leaks. We don't want to wait too late. We want to do it when it should be done.
Right, okay.
So we will say that it came in very, very close to what we estimated the cost would be for this. There was some analysis in terms of how much of the insulation needed to be addressed and it will be coordinated. Joe Hayes will be working with CMTA to coordinate the work in collaboration with the HVAC board.
And you went through scheduling and all that good stuff to try to hit all the right spots, so.
That is correct.
Okay, all right. I need a motion for the approval to accept all bids and award a contract to the lowest and best bidder, Imbus Roofing, for the base bid plus alternate number two for a total of $808,900.
Are those to approve?
Yeah, for the Highlands Roof Replacement.
Oh, sorry.
I have read $24 million numbers, but I'm looking at this going, doesn't look right, but yes. So moved, you moved?
Moved.
Second?
Yeah.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. All right, still standing up there.
Yep, so then as we talk about having to kind of comply with KDE's checklist, another item on the checklist for a project is after you receive the bid, you revise the BG one, which is the document you initiated a project with, and explain what the project is going to cost and how we are going to fund it. So now that the bids are in, we are going to amend that BG one to reflect the bid cost and since it is a reduction in the scope and cost of the project, it has gone down significantly. I believe the one I brought you to, brought to you several months ago was for 1.2 million. We are now down to $851,298 after we factor in all the other fees associated with a project like the amount you just approved.
Okay, any questions about this? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the revised BG one in the amount of $851,298 for the Highlands Roof Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, we're good.
Yeah, the final piece is associated with our previous meeting, so the Fort Thomas Finance Corporation approved the sale of bonds. At this time, this Board of Education has to authorize a resolution to accept that sale of bond.
Okay, questions at all? All right. I need a motion for the adoption of resolution authorizing the Fort Thomas Independent School District Finance Corporation to issue revenue bonds.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Okay, the next one is you, Brian.
Yeah, our last item of business in the action items is related to a request for consideration of a resolution in support of an effort from the Council for Better Education, often known as CBE. This is a group that assembles for very specific purposes at a variety of times in advocacy of public education. It's comprised almost entirely of statewide superintendents. This was the group that challenged the constitutionality of the financing portion of House Bill 563 last year and prevailed with the unanimous Supreme Court decision of the unconstitutionality of that portion of the law. Since then, the group has assembled to file, to file suit to challenge the constitutionality of House Bill Nine, which was the funding portion of the charter schools approach within Kentucky. So we've had charter school authorization for many years. What happened last year was a new revenue source that would be taking local dollars and local funds and channeling those local dollars to charter schools in a variety of settings. The parts of the bill that are being challenged specifically are related to public dollars, again, being used for private funds of local dollars that would be channeled to support charter schools outside the overall scrutiny and purview of elected boards of education. So in other words, we would be supporting a charter school with tax dollars raised under the authorization of this body, but with no oversight and accountability. And then the arbitrary nature of how, of how the pilots were established. So within this bill, it picked 7,500 students. Any district under 7,500 students was not subject to the bill. Where that number of students came from, no one can really tell. And then the fact that there was a pilot in northern Kentucky that authorized an outside agency, which would have been Northern Kentucky University or mayors in some settings through Jefferson County, the arbitrary nature is something else that's being challenged. So in this case, what we're asking for is, CBE only assembles when there's a specific issue and because they have filed a suit, they've asked for basically an assessment to member districts that would support that lawsuit. And especially being that we're right in the middle of northern Kentucky in that pilot juncture, I'm making that recommendation that you consider that.
Questions?
I'll just let, make a comment that I'm not necessarily a huge fan of the resolution and I don't think that they're necessarily wrong in what they're attempting to do. That House Bill Nine is probably somewhat of a mess. I just don't know that it applies to Fort Thomas. Got the best schools in the state, got the best teachers come to school every day to help our kids grow, teach, our parents send their kids to school ready and the kids come to school ready. I don't know that this is a Fort Thomas issue. Yeah, I don't disagree that there's a potential problem there, but I'd rather see this council focus on things to make overall state better, which is the funding formula is a mess, has been forever. They would prefer, they haven't attempted to file a lawsuit because it's basically us and a few other schools, not Jefferson County and Fayette County and some of the other big schools that really hate this charter bill. Perhaps they should focus on why the charter schools are becoming so popular in Frankfurt and fixing those problems. Again, I don't know that it's a Fort Thomas thing. You know, they... You know, they like us to be part of these because it's nice they can point to say, well, look, it's all the schools, it's the big schools, and then you've got Fort Thomas, the best school in the state agrees with that. And I think they like us to ride along, but they're not about to do anything to help us. So I don't think they're bad people, and I don't think they're doing it on purpose. I just think that their priorities are different than ours.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. All right, I need a motion for the adoption of the resolution authorizing the Fort Thomas Independent, the Fort Thomas Independent School District Finance Corporation, nope, wrong thing. I need a motion for the approval of resolution of support for the Council for Better Education Incorporated, which is CBE.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Okay, thank you. Next thing is the board committee updates. Does anybody have a committee update for committees that they're working? Working on?
Well, I have a, I can't remember if I've been in a meeting with the Education Foundation, but just to let everybody know, very successful event with Parents Night Out this past weekend, a number of opportunities to raise money and have fun. So thank you to the committee. I know Maggie McCluskey was chairing, heading up that committee, so thank you to her and her committee and the foundation. I know too, you've probably seen, the signs are up for the Bourbon Raffle, so you know, check that out as well. So those are kind of the most current, along with the Nesties and the support of that, that the Education Foundation is working on. Oh, duh. And they're also handing out lots of grants to teachers, which you were probably seeing in social media and will continue to see. So a really kind of exciting time for the Education Foundation. I love getting to hear, you know, just the great work that people in our community are willing to do, time, money, treasure, talents that they'll put, put in for our school district and for our staff and for our students. So yeah, busy, busy time.
Anybody else? We, I'm on the breakfast committee, so the breakfast committee continues to feed, so we will bring food on Wednesday for late arrival. And that is another thing I want to thank our community because our community has donated money and we were able to do something at the beginning of the year, and then we continue to do things through the year, so it's kind of a fun thing, so. All right, any?
I was gonna just say, the committee you and I serve on budget and salary.
Yes.
Met this past month, so it was, it was really good. We're in, we're in, we're more to, I think next month's board meeting, we're to share budget and some of that stuff, but I mean, the school district is in probably some of the best shape, you know, for a lot of reasons, cost savings and everything that we've done over the last couple of years. And so, you know, we worked hard on some things around salary as well to make sure that we're taking care of our staff and that we're able to hire and retain best teachers out there. So I think we'll have probably things finalized next month, but it really, I think, looked good.
We've made a big commitment and meet regularly with, you know, a 10-year plan, so. Anything else?
And maybe Mr. Darnell can correct me if I'm wrong. The Hall of Fame nominations, they have until Wednesday, so that's another committee that I and Clem, Clem and I serve on. So Wednesday's the deadline for that. All information's on the athletic department webpage, so probably if you're starting right now, maybe a little behind the gun, but you do have, you know, 36-plus hours.
Okay, the next thing is the approval of the consent agenda, and I need a motion, with all the board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about all of the items contained therein, I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. The next thing is other business. Do you have any other business, or we kind of just woe him through it?
It is woven.